All right, so welcome, everybody, to April 13th, 2021 City Council Meeting. The following, all right, hold on, let me start over. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 63 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be held by roll call vote. So if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications or the public hearing to be recognized to speak. And in attendance, I'm going to go from my left, top left to my bottom right. We have Councillor Gilman, we have myself, Councillor LeBlanc, we have Councillor Holmgren, Councillor Nolan, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Pepp, Councillor Cox and Councillor Memhard are not going to be with us this evening, and we have Councillor O'Hara. So we do have a quorum of the city council this evening. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. Okay, so during oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks prior relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. All right, so do we have anybody that would like to speak under oral communications this evening? Once again, you can raise your hand, or you can press star nine. Right, we have, Mary Ann, can you hear me?
I can, Steve, thank you. Mary Ann Boucher, 93 Mile Pleasant Avenue.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'd just like to know, and I know you probably don't have this answer in front of you right now, but I just would like to know, a follow up to Green Street. I'd like to know where the entrance for that new field will be. Will that entrance be from Ledgemont? I have had several people call me, because you all know that I've been pretty involved in this, and to ask me if I knew anything. So I'm coming forward to ask, will the entrance to the Green Street new field be on Ledgemont? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann, appreciate that. We'll get an answer up to you as soon as possible. Let's see here. And we have a caller. Caller, last four digits, zero, I mean, I'm sorry, 2728, can you hear me? Hello, caller, can you hear me? Last four digits, 2728. I am going to ask them to unmute, and I'm going to leave them there for a minute, but I see Mary Ann had her hand up. Mary Ann, did you have another question? I know you were really quick. I see your hand up again.
Maybe you got me now.
Oh, there we go, perfect.
Okay, I just pressed another code. Dennis McGurk, from 283 Concord Street. Just a couple of thoughts in watching, I guess I have, watching what's going on around town again, and seeing what's going on in neighborhood towns as well. The firing range issue, I won't get into it, obviously, but it didn't have to be this way. And the cost to neighbors, a lot of time, money, and anxiety. It didn't need to be that way. The, you know, as I drive around town, I look at Marshall Stump Dump, it continues to grow. I listened in last week on the Upper Banjo Development Cluster that's in the making, and I can't tell you how outrageously improper that is to call it a cluster development. You know, just changing R30 to R10 is all they're doing. And the concern is overall, I know we have to fix some regulations so that you can't drive trucks through some of these regulations, but in the meantime, who are the defenders of our open space and our clean water and our environment? I looked at the situation in Manchester that was wrapped up, well, temporarily wrapped up, and there's an excellent article, excellent article in the paper commending the city selectmen, the town selectmen, for standing up to the developers and standing up what's for right, for proper development, for understanding the housing production plan and working in accordance with that. I don't see that happening in Gloucester, and I'm very, very concerned about where do we go from here? If nobody's steering the ship, where do we go? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications this evening? If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you're watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise hand button you can press to to request to speak. All right, going once, oral communications. All righty. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the first presentation from Greg Catamatory, the Planning Director, and representatives from Good Energy LP regarding an update on municipal energy aggregation in Gloucester.
All right, how you doing, Greg?
Evening, councillors. And if Joanne or Councillor LeBlanc, if you could promote Daria Mark as well as John O'Rourke, they are the representatives from Good Energy, and I believe they're in the attendee list. So they are here this evening to give you an update and give the public an update on the, really, the success story of the municipal aggregation program that's been going on for two plus years at this point. So they'll be giving you some of the high points of how it's performed, and also to start talking about the potential for a new contract. Again, for folks that are unfamiliar with us, the city, a little bit, two and a half years ago, went out for a collective bid for an alternate electrical supplier so that all customers or residents in the community would have the opportunity to participate in a supply agreement that would potentially lower their electrical supply a portion of their utility bill, as well as small businesses. And so they'll give you some of the highlights of how that's performed. It's had really good participation, and thus far has also resulted in both savings to individual accounts or residents and businesses, and also has increased the amount of potential renewable energy in the region. So I'm not sure if John or Daria is going to take the lead, but I'll let them take over, and if they could also have permissioning to share a screen, because they're going to provide a little presentation.
Very good, Greg. Joanne, can we make sure they can share their screen?
Yes, that's already set to share the screen.
Thank you for the introduction, Greg, and thank you, President LeBlanc and councillors. Good to see you again, although, under the circumstances, it's not optimal. And certainly, good to see Mayor, Madam Mayor, here as well. We just want to give you a short update on the aggregation program and talk about renewing the program. Daria, thank you, you can control the slides. As you know, your program launched in December of 2018, although it was approved much earlier than that. But as you remember, there was a capacity spike in the northeast Massachusetts load zone, which obviously Gloucester is in, and we had to, you know, delay that opening, that launch. The current contract ends December of 2021. So why are we talking now about renewal? We're in a very, very good energy market right now. As you know, over the last year of the lockdown, there has been, you know, a reduction in energy usage. So we're in a very good place to renew for a start in December. The present program includes a 5% Massachusetts Class 1 REC default over the RPS, the Renewable Portfolio Standard. About 1% of the participants in the program are at the 100% green option, and that accounts for about 10% of the total renewable energy. Right now, the program participation is within about 10% of the peak in 2019. So the program is looking, looking very good, very stable over this time. Daria, next slide. This is the enrollments for the local green product. It's almost 11,000 in this product. You can see that cumulative savings are very good at 1.27 million. And we have to say every time that we mention the word savings, that it can't be guaranteed because of future changes in the basic service rate. You can see we've had extra renewable energy. It's very good at 8,357,000 kilowatt hours. And again, you can see on that bottom graph that the participation has been very stable over the period of the program. All right, this slide is the 100% local green product. As you can see, cumulative savings are not expected to be positive because the people that enter this particular product are not expecting to save money. They're more interested in providing more renewable energy for the grid. You can see their share of renewable energy is about 87, 897,000 kilowatt hours. And you can see they've been pretty stable, too, with a slight incline over time. Daria, the basic program, again, you have about 200 participants in this program. Not a lot, but certainly it gives people the ability to participate in the program, and it has the same amount of renewable energy as a national grid. You can see savings are not incredible in this part of the program because you basically only have 200 participants. That has also been stable, and there's no additional renewable energy in this part of the program. This is a comparison between the national grid rates and the rate of the program over time. You can see how we started off very well. Then we had a situation where we were slightly above the national grid rate. Then national grid went to 13.9, we stayed at that 11. And you can see in the last two summer rate changes were both in this lockdown period. You can see how that's been an advantage, not only to national grid, but will also be an advantage to us when we go out to bid for the contract to start in December. So we're expecting some very good bids on the Gloucester load when we go out to bid. And we're going to get into renewable energy now, and I'll hand it over to Daria.
Great, thanks, John. So as John mentioned, there is additional renewable energy that is included in your program, both in the default or standard product that most participants are enrolled in, but also in the 100% option. So since launch, we used, the program bought around 10,000 megawatt hours of the additional renewable energy in 2020, it was around 4,000. And, you know, these numbers are so big and abstract. It's kind of sometimes helpful to put some equivalence to them. So the, these additional recs is around 1,500 typical Gloucester homes, so we could see how much the average homeowner uses or program participant uses in their electricity and calculate out kind of how many homes that would cover, or about the annual output of a one and a half megawatt turbine, or 11 acres of solar. So I hope that helps going to quantify a little bit of the additional renewable impact that you're having as a program. So additional renewable energy is one of the things that can be adjusted between the program renewals. And so I think it's also really important to kind of, to think first about the 5% in the default product and how that relates to where the state requirements are right now. 5% may not sound like a lot to those who, you know, want to advocate for more, but when we compare it to what the state has required in 2019, that was only 14%. So 5%, that's actually a substantial increase. Got you up to 19%, and you can see the 2020, 2021 figures. And then what do we do going forward? What will be, we charted out the next three years, but we'll, you know, once we're bidding the program renewal, we'll decide kind of how many years that gives us for the best price. But this still gives you an approximation. So the CEC has recommended that Gloucester's programs stay with 5%. So in 2022, that would look at, that would be 25%, adding to the state's 20%, and then so on and so forth, at 27% and 29% going forward. So the timeline, John briefly mentioned this. We're in April, we've met and presented to the CEC the program renewal path, finalized the program features, and here we are at the city council with information session in May or June, depending on the best timing, we'll do the bid itself. And then, assuming it's successful, we actually hold off on any kind of outreach or marketing because it's very confusing to people when we start reaching out and giving them members on things they will not see for another six months. And so the outreach will come November, December timeframe. We'll create materials, we send out a letter that says, letting you know the program is being renewed. Thanks for your participation, and some numbers on renewable energy and the importance of supporting that. And it's a basic program, some basic program information. And then we'll do some more presentations, kind of as the CDC's fit, and any other education outreach materials that seem helpful at the time. And then in December, there'll be seamless enrollment. There truly is nothing that anyone has to do to roll from this contract into the next one. Those who are in the default options, stay in the default option. Those who are in the basics, stay in the basic. And those who signed up for 100% renewable energy, stay in that renewable energy also. So there's really no action. It's a very easy, comfortable process going forward. And that, that's the end of our presentation. Are there any questions? I'm not sure what the next.
Do we have any councillor questions?
I just, I just want to do, oh, somebody's got their, their mic on there, I'm getting some feedback. I just wanted to also recognize that Candace Wheeler, the Chair of the Clean Energy Commission, is here. Maybe somebody should need to mute. There we go. And also, in the attendee list, there are two other members. We don't have a quorum of the Clean Energy Commission, but also Linda Brayton and Linda Stout Sanders are here. I didn't know if you wanted to have Candace speak to their experience with this. They also reviewed this and actually made a motion to support moving forward with some of the same features of the existing program in the potential for a new bid. So I think Candace is on the line.
Let's see here. I don't see Candace.
So she's in as a panelist.
Oh, okay.
So I think you should be able to unmute Candace.
Yeah, we should. I just asked her to unmute, so it's up to her on her end at this point.
Unmute.
There we go.
Got it? Very good, thank you, everybody. I wanted to pass on the vote of the Clean Energy Commission on March 31st. We voted to recommend to the city that the contract with Good Energy Incorporated be renewed for another term of, you know, up to three years, or three years is what we anticipate the term would be unless there are any changes in the bidding situation. The Clean Energy Commission, first of all, feels that aggregation of electrical purchasing, where the city, in effect, is buying electricity on behalf of Gloucester's rate-paying residential accounts, is a wonderful way for cities and towns to really be effective in improving their carbon footprints. When you think about it, adding 5% more renewable for every single account in this city, that's a lot of additional renewable energy that is being, you know, shifted towards meeting the goal of reducing Gloucester's carbon footprint and promoting the use of renewable energy. And at this time, the Clean Energy Commission felt that it would be good to stick with the 5% increase over the minimum of whatever the state requires to be renewable because we think that we still have some work to do in public education about what aggregation is, what it means, how easy it is to be an effective protector of the climate by participating in aggregation. The participation has already been good, but we know that, you know, there are some people who are, you know, still a little hazy about understanding exactly what it is. And so we think that if we stick with the 5% increment and don't change the program dramatically for this renewal, that perhaps when the next renewal comes along, we'd be in a position to to recommend that the city increase the additional renewable proportion to maybe 10 or 15 or 20% above the state minimum, whatever it is at the time. So we've been very satisfied with the work that Good Energy has done to support the city, both in an excellent bid that they were able to get for us, and also in the support in publicity and in question answering and processing and submitting of all required reports on behalf of the city. You know, the Clean Energy Commission has not had to do the administrative legwork because Good Energy is very effectively providing that service for the city. So, you know, we wholeheartedly recommend to the city council that they approve and vote for the extension of Good Energy's contract, and we look forward to working with them in the next round. And if any of our other CEC members would like to speak up and add anything, I understand that they can have the floor as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
All right, we have Linda Brayton has her hand up. Let me bring Linda in. Where is she? Is she a panel? No, she's an attendee.
Attendee.
All right. All right, Linda, can you hear me? Hello, Linda.
Hello.
Hey, how are you?
How you doing? Okay, I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Candace had said. One of the things that we also talked about is just the conditions of the times, the economy, the uncertainty, that for us to start talking about increasing anything probably would not be an easy, an easy situation. So it seemed like it might be a good idea to just, just hold off on making any, any changes that are going to start too many discussions, so to speak, because it's going along, it's going along well right now. So that was another factor in our thinking. Also, we understand that without having to really do any more administrative kinds of things, we can just consider doing a campaign on our own that talks to the people who are buying it at 100% and saying, hey, you know, are there more of you out there? Because that really, from what you saw of the numbers, that's a really good place to, to, you know, with just a few more people, make a big difference. And it's not that bad of a, of a cost anyhow, as I can attest to, because I'm one of the 100%. It's just, you know, you're donating a little bit on your electric bill, and you're getting a whole lot out of it. So I also just encourage people to go to the cec.com website because there's calculators on there where you can figure out your own individual bill, how you're doing with your savings, and a lot of good stuff on how to opt out, how to opt out. So it would be really good to take a good look at that website.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anybody else? Do we have any questions? Councillor Gilman?
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Clean Energy Commission, for being on the call and all you do to help in this area. I have a question for both either John or Daria through the chair. My question is, has there been opportunities for us to look at regionalization as a way to help us with our rates?
A councillor, good to see you, Councillor Gilman. Essentially, there hasn't been much in terms of being able to go for regionalization because you have situations where you have some municipalities that haven't even gotten to the point where they're putting on a warrant article on their, on their warrant. And right now, the DPU, again, because of the lockdown, has slowed down significantly. The last three plans that we had approved just recently were put into DPU in the middle of 2019. So you can understand that those backlogs make it very difficult to plan a concerted effort of multiple towns to go out to bid together. And essentially, Gloucester is in a position where they're essentially the kingmaker here. If there were any other towns that wanted to come in and join Gloucester, it would be up to them, you know, to do that.
All right. Any more questions?
I could just also respond to that a little bit. Candace, as well as a couple of the other Clean Energy Commission members, I believe Linda Brayton and maybe Linda Stout Sanders, who's also on the call. We actually participated in kind of a working group over, over the winter to look at exactly that question about whether there were opportunities. There are communities that use a different broker, so to speak. We're using Good Energy, there are other players in this arena. And so there's a little bit of a mismatch in terms of when other communities might have their contracts ending, so that we, you know, would obviously want to be synchronous. And then also to that point of, it also affects the competitiveness with the suppliers as to, as to what, what the potential looks like for them to respond to, depending upon the makeup of communities that might be in it. So there may be situations where, you know, additional accounts isn't really the most advantageous for the residents of Gloucester to be partnered with other communities. And so that's what we're, you know, we're obviously relying on Good Energy to really, and they're committed to us to try to make the best possible scenario work for the citizens and businesses in Gloucester. So it was, it was a great exercise to participate in and really try to think a little bit bigger. And I think as more communities get involved in this and start to get plans approved, and there are contracts that are coming off, and there's opportunities, that's something that we can definitely and should continue to evaluate.
Councillor Holmgren?
Thank you, thank you, John and Daria and Greg and the CEC. I don't have a question, but I do want to voice my appreciation for emphasizing the importance of opting into the 100% renewable. I was remiss in not doing that the first time, but I can see now especially how easy it is for all of us in the city to help out. It's, it's literally, it takes absolutely no thought at all to opt for a higher level. And I can see exactly how it's benefited the city in numerous ways. So I will be doing that as soon as I get off the meeting tonight. So thank you very much, and I'll be encouraging others to do it as well. And I do want to extend my, my appreciation to Good Energy and the Gloucester CEA team because constituents have had questions over the past few years, and they've been very responsive. So really, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Do we have any other councillor questions? Councillor Gilman?
Sorry, but I just have a follow-up question to what Councillor Holmgren just said because it kind of, it's a question that I've always had. So can you give me an example of four or five of the renewable opportunities that we have in Gloucester, other than like the wind turbines? I mean, can you, can you just kind of summarize what those are? So if we're out there trying to sell this to people or to our own family to convince them to do this, this option, what it is, what some of... this option, what it is, what some of those opportunities are for renewable? I don't, I don't know if that's Greg or John or Daria or Candace.
Daria, maybe you could just, oh, somebody's still, not muted.
No, I'm happy to address that question. So your, how's my sound?
You're good. Yeah, Daria. When you're, when you're unmuted, Daria, it's your reverb, and I think John's too. So after you're done speaking, if you want to just mute yourself, that'd be great.
Okay, are we in good place?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so I could definitely address that. So your renewable, the additional renewable energy above what's, what's required by the state comes from a wonderful nonprofit called Green Energy Consumers Alliance. And Green Energy Consumers Alliance, their, their whole goal of their organization is getting people off fossil fuels into a sustainable future. And so supporting renewable projects that are strategically developed and would not be developed otherwise without supportive programs like Gloucester and the 5% that you have in your default and the 100% that's available, that would not be built without that support. So if you want to see the resources, the resources page, greenenergyconsumers.org is their website, and they have a, a chart that shows where all the different resources from which they buy their renewable energy come from. And so they, they also give tours and I, you know, when we get past COVID and can see each other again and can be in public spaces together, that's, that's another awesome way to get to know your renewable energy, your sources. I hope this helps. Let me know if there's, if you'd like more detail.
Thank you. So Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, once we get down this path for the opt-in or opt-out part of this, you're automatically in the, in the, the pipeline unless you want to opt out. Is this correct?
Yes, so at any time, if, if, and, and there probably have been some instances, as you could see, there were, there were times over the life of this contract where the national grid basic service rate was slightly below the negotiated rate with direct energy, that people may have fallen out of the program for a period of time. And then when it switched, again, there's a lot of management. Some people have, you know, maybe tracked it that successfully. But as you can see over the long haul in this instance, it, it looks like the negotiated rate will outcompete over the, over the three-year period. So the intent here would be in that timeframe of May to June, Good Energy will, will go to the market essentially. Hopefully, we'll get several bids to be considered. We have a designated signatory, and if, based on the advice of Good Energy and consultation with, with a city team to, you know, again, we want to see something that's competitive. Again, there's, there's multiple components to this. Not only is it to promote renewable energy, it's also, you know, what it means to the individual at that basic product that's out there at 5%. And, you know, the good news so far is that not only have we been supporting renewable energy, we've also been resulting in savings to each household that's participated. So, you know, we'll have that as a tool to evaluate whether or not this is a good contract to move forward with. Again, it, it could be something that will only span another year. It could be two years, it could be up to three years. It'll depend on, on how it comes back. And if it's successful and it looks like it's something good for the community to participate in, it will be seamless at, at the end of December. Again, though, that will be, nearing that point is really where there'll be a lot more outreach to folks directly and also through, you know, through the council, through every avenue we have to make sure they understand what the new program would be. And, and also alerting them to, at any time, they have the opportunity to, to opt out of the program. You know, I think we, you know, we heard a little bit earlier on, you know, concern about how, how this program was rolled out, because again, not everybody's in favor of, of people making decisions for them. But, you know, I, I, I think as you can see from the data so far, it's been pretty successful in, in hitting, I think, both of those goals of, of, you know, providing some savings to, to the households as all, as well as, you know, adding additional renewable energy to the region.
All right, thank you, Greg. Are there any more counselor questions? All right, we're ready to wrap up this presentation. Okay, so I just want to big, big thank you to Greg, the Good Energy team, Stefano, Daria, John, Bill, Candace, Linda, and everybody else who's participated in this and is pushing to save Gloucester money. We appreciate everything you do, and we're looking forward to seeing you back in November for the results. All right.
And I'll also commit, we'll certainly inform the council of, of what might happen this spring. Again, you know, right now, it looks like it'll be a good opportunity for a bid. And so whatever the results are, we'll, we'll certainly report back to the council.
Great, thank you, Greg. Okay, Madam Clark, before we get to the next order of business, I just want to make a couple announcements. This evening, we also have on our call is Mayor Taken. We have our CAO, Nicole Keizer. We have our CFO, John Dunn. We have our Community Development Director, Jill Cahill. We have our Police Chief, Ed Conley, and we have our DPW Director, Mike Ail. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We have 10 people in attendance also. Madam Clark, we have the next order of business, please.
I just want to mention that Kenny Costa, the auditor, is on, and he's on as an attendee, I believe.
Let me, let me, everybody else is a panelist. Let me bring them in. And we have our, we have Kenny Costa with us. Awesome, awesome. Thank you, Kenny. All right, Madam Clark, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is another presentation, and it's from Jenny Benedict, the Library Director regarding the new Gloucester Connection portal on the library website.
All right, Jenny, how are you?
I am well. Thank you.
I see you have Melissa, Julie, and Andy. Let's see here. We have Linda is on the call. Do you want to promote her to this? Is she going to be speaking at all?
I guess, please, both she and Andy. And if I may share my screen, we have a presentation.
Thank you. All right, Jenny, are you trying to share your screen at all?
I am.
All right, we got it. Good. Yep, we got it. Perfect. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. So, good afternoon, council, and thank you very much for this opportunity to introduce a new community website, Gloucester Connection, and it's gloucesterconnection.org. So with me this evening is Melissa Demond, who's the President and Executive Director of Wellspring House, and she's going to join me in some introductory remarks. And then Julie Travelers, who's the Community Librarian at Sawyer Free Library, and Andy Allen, the Director of Adult Education at Wellspring, will take you on a quick tour. So from Sawyer Free Library's perspectives, we recognize that K-PAN has a variety of services, but that information about them wasn't easy to find, and particularly for newcomers to Gloucester and for those whose primary language is not English. So at Sawyer Free Library, we've served the community's informational needs for decades with open access to knowledge and ideas. So centralizing and consolidating this community information into an easy-to-use online platform that's really directly related to our core mission. We were delighted in this conversation to find that key community partners also saw this as a priority for our community, and we formed a core committee with Wellspring House, Action Inc., Gloucester Housing, and Gloucester Public Schools. And in particular, Wellspring House has been instrumental in providing key support in strategic decision-making and project implementation. So I will introduce Melissa.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us to be with you tonight. It's so nice to see everyone on the council, and I just want to say a shout out to my own counselor as well as Counselor Holgren and Counselor Nolan, who have more to do directly with Wellspring House, because we're in your neighborhood. One of the things I wanted to just point out is, Wellspring is focused on helping family, local families achieve financial security. And as part of that mission, for many years, we've been in close partnership with the library running an English-for-speakers-of-other-languages program. And the inception for this project came from a series of focus groups that the library and Wellspring did together, and what we learned from parents in those focus groups, we ran those groups in English, Portuguese, Arabic, and Spanish. And we learned from folks really across the board that they enjoy being in Gloucester. It's a safe community, it's a beautiful community, and once they feel connected, they feel very welcomed. But it's very hard to get started as an outsider in the community, even if someone is a native to the US and speaks English. And so that's really what this is about. This is a first stop. It's not the end-all, be-all. Our hope is that it can become the, the generic go-to starting place for organizations and people to begin to get to their next step of making it easier to have a centralized place to go for information. And I think what I would like to say also is just, this is the launch, which means this is the beginning. And Andy and Julie can share more with you, but it's not a fixed website. It's designed to be changeable, and folks who post have information on the site, they control that themselves. So this is a, an opportunity for people to get clear and current information for any number of life circumstances. And I, our hope is that it helps make people's transition into the community easier and for folks who are at just different stages of life, even having lived in the community for a long time, that it helps people access the resources that they need. Thanks so much.
So Julie is going to describe the, the inside of the site. And I've got my little pointer here, so I will go with you.
Sure. So the web platform is free to use, and it's a centralized online directory with an event calendar aspect as well that consolidates information from all the local organizations for residents, visitors, and other service providers. As you can see, the services are organized into six categories, which are basic needs, public schools and youth programs, adult education and job training, housing, transportation, and health and wellness. Services are also searchable by population served, service subcategories, any of them. You can search by organization and other just keywords.
Good evening, everyone. This site is a welcoming connection for newcomers to Gloucester in providing information, key information. Everything from registering kids for public schools, signing up for Mass Health, finding information and applications for housing, locating information about Cape Anne Transportation, and where to find classes such as English speakers for other languages, college readiness. They're over, so just to point out in the language thing just a little bit, this is a Google-run translation, but we find it to be very, very effective. And so if you're looking for information in Portuguese, you click on it. If you're looking for information on Farsi, you click on it, and it translates not just that section, but the entire website, and you can go back and forth on that. I also want to point out that right now, there are over 25 organizations, both public and private, that have contributed information about their services. And as Melissa stated before, organizations, organizations are responsible for updating their own information so that it remains current. What I think that really we need to speak to about that, just so everyone knows, is, is that, as Melissa pointed out, this is a living, breathing website, so it changes. So people change. You're always going to have something up to date, and then they can come back to the two administrators of the site. In this case, it's Julie and I, and we can.
No.
Editing changes.
Order something out. Hold on one second. Can I ask everybody else?
What are you going to get?
All right, I think everybody else has made a guess. I'm sorry about that. That was weird.
That's not a problem. And so just in this particular site, what you're actually seeing is little snapshots of organizations, and then those go on to little snapshots of services. It's truly interactive, and we designed it to be very easy to use.
So thank you for that, Andy and Julie and Melissa. That gives you a brief overview of Gloucester Connection, and we invite you to explore the site at greater length and hope that it is a, it's a frequently used resource for you. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty, thank you. All right. Counselor Holgren, then Counselor Nolan.
Thank you all. This is a thrill. This is absolutely wonderful. I am, I'm curious about if, if an agency would like to be added. Are they able to do that themselves, or should they reach out to someone? And I just, I can't tell you how wonderful this is, working in nonprofits on K-PAN to see this sort of clearinghouse format. It's sorely needed. So thank you all very much.
Thank you for that, Counselor Holgren. Yes, the site is open for all community organizations to contribute their information. We recommend that they reach out to either Andy at Wellspring or Julie at Sawyer Free Library, and they can give them the directions on how to establish their page and, and the directions for uploading content.
Thanks, Jenny, Melissa, and Andy.
Thank you, Jen. Counselor, Counselor Nolan.
Not really a question. Jen actually answered that with her question. These are some of the best groups we have in the city of Gloucester, and working together is unbelievable. I love the Google language barrier, the input from all the other associations in town. And I'm really happy. You guys knocked it out of the park with this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, Counselor Nolan, for that.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what my fellow counselor said, this to me is one-stop shopping for people in the community. It really is just something that they can log into and just get a sense for what their needs might be on a just-in-time standpoint. It's, it's very cool. I do have a small question. So can, can a person just keep their own website that they have on this? Or does it have to be kind of customized to fit into the template that you've given us? What, what is the protocol for that?
Andy, would you like to take that?
Sure, I can take that. Thank you very much for your question, Counselor Gilman. I think that what this allows you to do is it's built out so that you put your organization on it, and your organization might have several services, and each has a gateway. Each service in each organization actually has areas to link to their homepage, to link to specific skills on their, their own personal websites that they do, and to link to any Facebook or Twitter URL. So it's an extension. So the way I look at this is a gateway. You enter this, you say that you're interested in finding childcare or shelter or, you know, a specific element going on at the Sawyer Free Library. You click on that, it presents you with links, and it brings you to all of those locations in one spot.
Thank you.
And I, I think the other thing, if I can just jump in on that, is that all right, Jenny?
Yep, absolutely.
That it's not intended to be comprehensive about any one particular issue. So there might be a group, like, for example, the Gloucester Health Department has been doing asset mapping for services for young adults and youth, particularly mental health services. So this is not intended to be, instead of that, this would link to that other resource. So that, again, it's where you start to then get to more detailed information other places.
Thank you. Mayor, I see you have your hand up. I'm going to get through the counselors first, and then I'll let you close this up. Okay, Counselor Pat?
Yes, first of all, thank you to all of you. This is absolutely phenomenal. And I hope everyone will use it. I don't really have a question, but a suggestion. I would hope that they, maybe the library and maybe the mayor on her Facebook page. Facebook is a, you know, is one of the biggest ways that many of those in our community that are, may not be, you know, from Gloucester originally or whatever. They communicate and they see things there. So I'm, I just suggest. They communicate and they see things there. So I'm, I just suggest that you somehow put something out on your Facebook, like the library put it out and the mayor put it out on Facebook for these people to be able to see it themselves. And obviously, we as counselors or other people can also connect with many of the different groups that we work with. But I think Facebook would be a great way to communicate to that population you're looking to serve. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any other counselor questions? All right. I mean, I know some people don't Facebook, but maybe if this can be put on the city's webpage for a little while also. But I'm going to give, hand it over to Mayor Ticken.
Well, this was so people who are intimidated by social media. This is for intended for the schools that like to get some information out. This is like a beginning of a network, which is like every social agency, social workers dream for 20 years, right, Melissa? I mean, this is like, we do this every winter. We have to call each other, email each other. And how do you get that out? And Jen knows and all you know that, okay, it's winter, it's storm, where are you going to do this? This here is the beginning of something that I think it's great that Andy and Julie, if someone wants to actually add things, they go through someone and someone can actually feel these things out and make sure that they are proper, which is great. My office receives at least, I'd say about maybe 50 to 60 calls a week on what can I do for housing? Where do I go for assistance? What about, you know, the applications? Is it time? Do we have any, you know, CAC workers? What do I do? That, you know, there's so many different things. And, and the language barrier for all of us and in all different languages, because we are a multi-language community. And this here is going to be something that every person in the household should link on to. Because anything you want is going to be right there. You have your schools, you have your Wellspring, you have your action. You know, when it's fuel assistance time or, you know, there's something happening in the community. You know, this is going to be great. You know what? They might have questions and yes, they can link and we can always put, you know, certain things up with them. This is what you call a community that cares about their community. This is what you call is that important to community first. So a person who, you know, doesn't know what to do, you can connect them to the link and explain it to them. And then they're on their own. This is like, you know, like he said, Andy said, it's perfect. You'll clink and it's everything in their language. It's just amazing. So this is really thought out. I know all of you, Jenny, Julie, Andy, and Melissa, and all your team, it's been, you know, a long process and wanted to do it, you know, correctly. And I think this really is this great. It's like for people who are familiar with tourism, when they do Discover Gloss, you have that one link and it goes on. Well, this here is all about your social services. This now is the home base. And that's what's the best about it. Because even the Gloucester, and I have to say it out loud, but I don't know how many times you're going to hear me say it. But our website, this is so plain and simple that this is like what our website should look like, the city website. One, two, three, link and everything else. It's confusing. And let's hope that, you know what, we can all link and we can all make sure that it's something that's easy. And that's what you want. So kudos to all of you and applause really, because it's just great. And thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did just sort of credit where credit is due. We did hire Social Capital, Inc. for this project, as folks have mentioned. They're a nonprofit that's based out of Woburn and Dorchester and Lynn. And, you know, they've been doing this for years in other communities. I worked with them on another project in Chelsea and they've done some work in Lawrence. And so we leaned on them for the design because that's really what they do is they build websites that are, that are for the greatest number of people to be able to use easily.
I saw there, I love them. Yep, I love them. Yeah.
All right. Anything else from the council? All right. It looks like we have a new Fab Four. We got Jenny, Julie, Andy, and Melissa. So congratulations, guys. We're looking to getting this thing, getting this thing out there for everybody. We appreciate you guys being here this evening, taking your time out of your busy lives and evenings and spending a little time with the council. If there's anything else you need from us, just reach out to us individually. We're all here for you. So if there's anything else we can help you with, don't hesitate to ask. All right. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right. Are there any counselors that would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Holmgren, seconded by Counselor Gilman. All right. I will call for the roll call and up for us this evening is Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox is not with us this evening. Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard is not with us this evening. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor and two absent. Thank you, counselors. All right. We have a unanimous consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove anything from the unanimous consent agenda this evening? All right. Seeing none, same thing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda.
Counselor?
Counselor Gilman.
Yeah. Can I just remove this for a second?
Sure.
Thank you. So do you want me to continue?
Yeah, there's nobody else. There's only one item. So go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to be transparent to the public on the unanimous consent agenda. What we have on the unanimous consent agenda is Council Order 2021-008. And we're ordering that the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270.1. Resident sticker parking only, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. May 1st through September 15th, comma, Section 22-291, tow away zone. Be amended to include the following streets. I don't need to read them, but there are 45. And we're trying to get this through in anticipation of a busy summer again. And we're trying to be as proactive as we can. So we're hoping that this can go through O and A expeditiously, but fairly. So counselors, I would just suggest that, you know, if you, if you need to do some more check-ins with your neighborhoods, that this is the time to do it. Just because I think, like I said, you know, this is going to have to take 31 days to get into effect. And we'd like to see that this moves forward in a fair way and transparent way. So with that in mind, I'd like to, to, to vote to approve the unanimous consent agenda as noted.
For Counselor Gilman, are you amending the consent agenda or you're just, that was just information only?
It was just information only.
All right. Because, okay. All right. So I guess Counselor Gilman moved the consent agenda, the unanimous consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yeah.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of April 8.
Thank you. So Counselor McCarthy, you are the lone Budget and Finance member this evening. So you get the privilege of moving the motion.
Feeling very lonely here. The Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one absent, to recommend that the City Council approve supplemental appropriation 2021-SA-16 and the amount of $70,000 from the Capital Project Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance Account 7600-359000 to the Capital Project Stabilization Fund Police Department Public Safety Equipment Account 760028 for the purpose of repairing and repowering the police department's 2009 safe boat in Isomel.
And I'll second that. Nope. I'll give it to Counsel O'Hara. It's been moved by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there any discussion? John?
Yeah, just Chief Conley, he's here tonight. He's came before us with a proposal backed by the administration to repower the boat. We know we had a very busy summer last year. The motor's on the boat. Been there since, since I was chief. So they've done their service life. I'll turn it over to Chief Conley if he wants to say anything.
Absolutely. How you doing, Chief?
Good evening, counselors. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. As all of you bear witness to last summer, we, the boat was a priority for us on the Anna Swamp. As we, you know, the Harbor Master does an outstanding job, but they're limited because they don't have enforcement authority for criminal law. And even for some of the other enforcement they had to do last year, they're not trained or equipped to defend themselves if they come into an adversarial encounter. And, you know, to be honest, my first year here, my first summer, the boat wasn't necessarily a priority for us. We're the quarry action and the beach action. But last year, it absolutely was, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. So it's important for us to have this, not only on the water, but also to be reliably on the water. And that's what this appropriation request is all about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Barry, I saw your hand here. Counselor Pat?
Yeah, just a quick note. Obviously, thank you to the place for their work, not only every day, but obviously on the water. And obviously, Counselor McCarthy is very well versed, having spent all so many years, never mind his chief, but on the water and knows what's going on with this. And I just want to remind the chief to make sure that everything goes into the, the police fast, you know, boat, not, not to Counsel McCarthy's boat, you know? We, you know, he, he won't keep it in the city. He's going to head south with it down to Florida. So absolutely support this being done. Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy is always, Counsel McCarthy is always the honorary captain on, on the police boat. Whenever he steps on, it's like the queen stepping on the Queen Elizabeth, you know, it's, he's in charge. That's what we tell him. We tell him that.
I love that he's the queen and not the king. I'm sorry. I had to pick, I had to pick that up. All right. Any other counselor discussion? All right. Seeing none, motions been made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. I will call for the roll.
Counsel O'Hara has his hand up. Excuse me, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Go ahead, Jamie. I'm sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, Counsel Holmgren. I was just, if the chief could explain for the people at home what the city is investing in as far as the boat. Just explain to them what, what we already have and what we're doing for upgrades, if you would, please, chief. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel, for the opportunity to do that. So there's a significant amount of the funds requested will go to repowering the boat. The boat has two outboard engines on it currently. Last year, we were in the process of repowering, but we thought, given the amount of time it would take to repower and put the boat, turn it around, put it back out in the water, it was better for us to make a repair to one of the outboard engines. But we knew that that was probably the end of both. And as Counsel McCarthy said earlier, these engines have been around for a long time and have a lot of difficult, hard hours on them. So we're purchasing new Suzuki outboard engines to repower the boat. The other funding, a small portion, about $13,000 is going to do typical type maintenance to get the skip pads upgraded, to do some repairs to the external parts of the boat and some of the electronics. I should also say that with the repowering of the boat, because things have changed in terms of technology and you put new engines on, you also have to change out some of the steering mechanisms and so-called fly-by-wire steering needs to be installed. And that's all part of this. So I'm very confident with this investment in the boat. We'll have it for several more years. It'll be, will be very operational.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else? All right. That was a great question. Counsel O'Hara? All right. So motion's been made and seconded. We're ready for the roll call, everyone? All right. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right. Thank you, chief. Thank you, chiefs, for, John, for moving it and Ed for being on the call. All right. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order is the ordinance and administration standing committee report of April 5.
All right, Sean. Sean's stepped away, but there are no items under the setting this evening. So Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The Planning Development Standing Committee did not meet on April 7. The meeting was canceled. So the next item is the first public hearing, public hearing 2021-009, loan order 2021-002, loan authorization request in the amount of $1,200,000 for water capital projects.
All right. And before we move with the public hearing, Counsel McCarthy, you'll be heading up these public hearings also with the motion, just to give you, you know, the motions in front of you, down at the public hearing part of the template. Okay, great. All right. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor.
Good evening, Counselor. Mike Hale, Public Works Director. How are you?
Good, Mike. Thank you. Nice to see you.
See you. Thank you very much for having me tonight. So this is a two-part authorization. The first one is a water authorization in the amount of $1.2 million. Includes the Bertoni and York Road neighborhood, which was, I believe, brought to the council's attention via oral communications last fall. It's been on our radar screen for a few years. This is, once was a private subdivision, probably late 40s, prior to 128 being constructed. It's relatively inadequate infrastructure that fails frequently. It makes sense to go and replace the water as part of an overall improvement to this now public road network. Also on this is the completion of the Trask Street project, which was a Mass Works grant. There are a few small branches off of the grant project that we seem, we believe would make sense to do now, since we're getting ready to put the neighborhood back together again. Includes Upper Millet, Forest, and a small section of Warner Street. They're kind of outside of the Mass Works project. We get those done and that puts this neighborhood together for a generation. And they do not need to be disturbed again. Gas has been done, sewer's been done, and now water will be done. Roads and sidewalks, we need to be done another 20 years, but we're going to do it now and buy someone some peace for another 20 years.
Anything else, Mike, in favor?
Not for this particular one. I'll hit more than the next one.
All right. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Once again, if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are on a laptop or device or whatever you watch us on, there is a raise hand button to acknowledge to speak and we'll bring in to speak. Anybody in favor or anybody in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any oral communications? There any, any communications? No. Are there any counselor questions? No. Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you. Just like to ask Mike Hale, Mike, if you could explain again to the people at home what, what you typically find as far as, as you mentioned, Bertoni, some of the spurs off of Trask, the condition or the vintage of the pipes that you are replacing? Just so people can understand that this is money well spent.
Thank you, Counselor. They have, they're two very different neighborhoods. Millet Street, Warner Forest, that's old public infrastructure. It's just run its, it's run its course as far as its life expectancy would go. Water mains of that vintage, probably installed in the 30s, are cast iron mains. They tuberculate, meaning they kind of corrode from the inside, reducing the amount of volume that can flow through the pipes. It provides less volume to the homes around them. And this is at the cusp of the high and low pressure districts in Gloucester. The high pressure is fed off of the Blackburn Industrial Park Water Tower. And the lower side's fed off of the Bond Hill Underground Storage Reservoir. Forest, Millet, Millet, and Warner, just, they're just old neighborhoods that this needs to be refreshed at this time. We've done everything else in the neighborhood. These stretches were not eligible in the Mass Works Grant. It's not like we forgot about them. They just were not eligible. And a little bit further investigation, it made sense to do these now versus paving all the streets around them and having to come back in a few years. York and Bertoni, that's a subdivision now from the 50s. It's got very undersized infrastructure. York and Bertoni, that's a subdivision now from the 50s. It's got very undersized infrastructure. The, the water is, is a two-inch water main, does not provide fire protection, does not provide adequate volume to all the development in the neighborhood. And the next authorization will be some work, some requests for sewer money. The sewer mains in that neighborhood, they run under 128, because 128 wasn't there, to the pumping station on Gloucester Avenue. Those mains are, I couldn't describe how deep they are under 128. They're, they're inaccessible to us. They're clay tile lines and they are within the groundwater. So there's a fair amount of flow into the Gloucester pump station that's simply just groundwater, not wastewater. So it's extra effort to pump that, extra effort to treat that, and it just, it's not necessary. It should be resolved as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Oh, actually, I'm going to close the public hearing and then I'll call for the roll call. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent.
Excuse me, Counsel LeBlanc, but I don't, John McCarthy, Counsel McCarthy read the committee report. Did I miss that?
No, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm one, I'm one step ahead. I was, I was really in, in depth with this infrastructure. So we'll call, we'll close the public hearing. We'll take our back our votes and ask for the committee report.
The Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the following loan authorization as follows. That the city of Gloucester appropriates $1,200,000 to pay costs associated with various water improvement projects, including but not limited to the Bertoni York Road Neighborhood, water main replacement, and Upper Millet Forest Warner Street water repairs, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet the amount in pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority, the mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, except expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay cost of these projects. Any premium received by the city upon sale of any bonds, notes approved by this vote, less than such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under Chapter 44 of general laws. Any and all bonds authorized by this order to provide such information, execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes. And I so move.
Second. Right, motion's been moved by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Nolan. Counselor discussion. Counsel Gilman?
I think that Counsel McCarthy missed reading one line, if I'm not mistaken. I believe we missed the line after, related thereto, to meet the appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow an amount under and pursuant to MGL. So if anybody else heard that, maybe we should amend the motion. Am I correct?
I'm not sure. I thought I heard him say that.
I heard that. I did hear that.
Yeah.
So you heard, you heard him read it?
Yep.
Without error. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, so I will take back. I just, I just thought that I didn't hear that. So we're, we're, just forget that I ever said that. I just, thank you for listening.
Yeah, just, I had to step off for a minute during Director Hale's commentary. And I know the, the residents of, like Trask and Warner and Millet Street, et cetera, have been dealing with the National Grid work and the, all the other work for quite a period of time. And I'm just wondering if with this approval, if he gave us or if he could give us a timeline, a timeframe as to when this work might be able to be completed. I understand that we still have, you know, COVID issues and, you know, obviously, things are weather dependent and all of that. But I'm just wondering if we have some sort of a timeframe, whether it's, you know, six months, another year, or who knows?
Through the council president, the, our, the city work was completed last June. The issue was really National Grid's ability to work during the pandemic. They had a lot of restrictions and what they couldn't, could not do. They could not go into homes. And it was the longest time, if they could actually even have crews on the street other than for emergency work. And this was not considered emergency work. So they didn't mobilize back until August. And then that led up to getting the, the infrastructure in, and then the individual connections didn't wrap up until probably 10 days ago. They, they demobilized from the site. We have control of the site again. We're already starting to relay sidewalks on Warner Street. And once I give, once I get the blessing for this loan authorization and the account is made, we can encumber the funds to our contractor. They are on call for this type of work and they will begin immediately. So I would hope that we could have everything put together again by early to midsummer. I mean, that's everything. Water, sewer work completed, roads restored, sidewalks done, and me not being in that neighborhood unless I'm visiting somebody.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. And again, people have been, you know, asking and we have been passing on the information. You've been very much on top of the National Grid and their complications with the COVID issues. But I just wanted to be able to refer to my constituents and let them know when they are questioning what type of timeframe. And I really appreciate all of your efforts on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mike. Any other counselor discussion? We've already passed the counselor questions part. We're in discussion after the motion. All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll, the real roll call this time. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. Thank you, councilors, and thank you, Joanne, for being on top of us. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the second public hearing, 2021-010, loan order 2021-003, loan authorization request in the amount of $3,225,000 for sewer capital projects.
All righty, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. Mr. Hale?
Back again. So this is the, the sister to the water appropriation. This is sewer appropriation. They often go hand in hand. This is a little bit larger scope work. It's the values twice as much, if not, actually more than twice as much. This is $3.2 million. This includes work for East Gloucester I and I, which is infiltration and inundation. East Gloucester, they're very old sewer system. We have a lot of clay tile pipe and asbestos concrete pipe. And those are dry-fit joints. And if they are below the water table, spring, high rains, water, groundwater just enters those pipes and inundates the sewer system. It taxes the pumping stations, costs money for electricity to move the water from one station to the next, and we're treating rainwater, which we don't need to. So we're required by DEP and EPA to mitigate as much I and I as possible. East Gloucester is our biggest source of it. So this product will begin to look at that work. Mansfield Street Sewer Interceptor is another part of this. That is the main drain for the entire city. All the sewer, other than what's in West Gloucester, drains through Mansfield Street to the Boulevard, to the wastewater plant. That is a early 20th century brick and clay tile pipe. And we line those occasionally to provide integrity and prevent groundwater from infiltrating the pipes. We're looking at the section that enters Western Ave on Mansfield Street as being a critical piece right now. It's complicated work. I know Counsel McCarthy had indicated that it's going to be a challenge for us. We certainly recognize that. But it's necessary to be done. The cost of replacing this with modern pipe would be very disruptive to a tight neighborhood like Mansfield Street. This authorization also includes sewer work in Bertoni and York Road. When we did water and sewer work on Popple Street last, last year, we set up a new manhole on Popple Street to accept sewer from York and Bertoni, preventing us from having to go back under 128. So we can flip the pipe around, shorter run out to Popple Street Sewer, which was not in place when Bertoni and York were constructed. Also, the interceptor that runs through Main Street and Rogers Street, we began a three-year program to clean and spot line the interceptor sewer. The interceptor sewer is nearly all the wastewater from East Gloucester runs through a main pipe through East Main Street, Rogers Street, Main Street, back to Rogers Street, eventually to Western Ave at the interceptor at Mansfield Street. We looked at replacing a small section of that when I was in the Engineering Division 15 years ago. And it was valued around, you know, eight or nine million dollars. And it was only the section around Gordons. So if you can imagine running this from Bass Avenue all the way to the wastewater plant, the value of that. So if we can keep up with the maintenance of this, this will provide us, you know, years, decades worth of reliable service to that. Cleaning, it's just like anything else. You have to clean your, your, your main sewer lines to make sure they're free of debris, rocks, sticks, rags, tires, bikes, balls. I mean, you wouldn't imagine what gets in these large sewer mains. And these aren't small. These are sizable mains. These are 42-inch mains. So it's, they're, they're large pipes. And then the last piece is completing the Grove and Colonial Sewer Work, which we began last fall. This will put this to rest. This is kind of the restoration of the sewer work that we did there. All the digging is done, other than the restoration of the road, which as soon as this authorization is live, we will begin that restoration work in the next few weeks, if this passes this evening, of course. And that's a lot, but that's what it is.
All right, Mike, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor this evening? If you are calling in, you can press star nine. If you are watching on a device or laptop, there's a raise hand button feature.
Craig Hamilton, you out there?
Is there anybody that, what's that?
I said Craig Hamilton, you out there?
I know, right? Anybody like, like to speak in opposition? I'm sure he'll be happy to hear this. I'm sure all my constituents will. All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
None.
All right, and do we have any counselor questions? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a quick question. And this, this isn't for, I, I just want to put this on the radar because I am going to make a request to the mayor later on this evening about the roads that we're going to be doing. I know you just spoke about several roads. But I'm sure there, you know, we got Washington Street. We've got some work going on. I mean, so later on, at some point this evening, Mike, I'm going to make a request to the mayor, maybe narrow down some of the roads, because I know we're all getting beat up on with what streets are, are the conditions are. And it'd be nice to maybe send a quick memo to the council so we know which, what phase we're going in and what streets we're going to be doing. So we can pass that along.
Counsel, if you ask me to.
Yeah, it'd be great. I'm, I'm, well, I'm going to make a request to the mayor. So let me formally do it later on.
Okay.
I just wanted to put it on your radar and not throw you for a loop later on, so.
I know, Mo. Thank you.
I know it'd be great to, for us to have that information to pass on to our constituents. Because I know we're getting calls and social media beat up and whatever else we get, so. All right, any other counselor questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counsel McCarthy?
The Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Ordered that the city of Gloucester appropriate $3,225,000 to pay costs associated with various sewer improvement projects, including but not limited to East Gloucester I and I work, Mansfield Street Sewer Interceptor, cleaning and lining Bertoni York Road Neighborhood Sewer Relay, Rogers Main Street Interceptor, cleaning and lining Grove Colonial Street Sewer Repairs, including costs incidental and related thereto to meet this appropriation. The treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, except and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay cost of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds. And I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Any counselor discussion? I guess Mike summed it up pretty good. All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the third public hearing, public hearing 2021-001 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Article 5, Stopping, Standing and Parking, Section 22-176A, Penalties for Parking Violations by Deleting $15 and Adding 25 for Improper Angle Parking and by Adding a New Code in Violation for Resident Sticker, Non-Beach Zone with a $50 Fine.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you like to say something or?
I think you should open a public hearing first and then I can do, like, in favor.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, all right. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there was anybody that would like to speak in favor. Would that be you, Madam Clerk?
I can stop that, that's for sure. Okay. So in researches in the parking fines at the request of Counsel Gilman, it was discovered that the online Code of Ordinances, Section 22-176, Penalties for Parking Violations, was not updated in the 2001, when the city council voted on June 25th, 2001, to increase the penalties for parking violations referenced in the, in that section of the code. And the city council voted on May 13th, 2003, to increase the meter violation from $10 to $15. The republication and the updating of the amendments to the online Gloucester Code of Ordinances started in 2010 going forward. Before 2010, I am not aware of how the amendments to the codes were updated. As a result, it appears that the fines we have been enforcing have been at the old rates and not reflecting the votes of 2001 and 2003. And I recommend that these fines be reflected as soon as the new ticket books have been ordered. To be clear, no one has been charged any of the higher rates. The Muni Code, the Gloucester Code of Ordinances Muni Code that will update Section 22-176 will be updated to reflect these increases in previously voted city council fines. This matter does not change. This matter does not change the council order being heard tonight at this hearing.
All right, is there anybody else like to speak in favor of this evening? If you are calling in, you can press star nine. If you are watching, you can there's a raise hand button to request to speak. All right, anybody in opposition? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
Do we have any counselor questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Nolan.
The ordinance administration voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council raise parking fines pursuant to Section 20A and a half of Chapter 90 of the general laws by amending GCO Chapter 22. Traffic and motor vehicles, Article 5, stop and stand in the parking, Section 22-176A. Penalties for parking violations by deleting $15 fine in a code 25 and adding a $25 fine for improper angle parking. And by adding the new code 26 and by adding violation for resident only sticker, non-beach zone with a $50 fine. And I so move.
Again.
Motion's been made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Any discussion? Counsel Gilman?
I may, I need to make a tiny amendment. I need to amend to the motion to amend Code 60, Code 26 to Code 12. As Code 26 already exists. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, so basically, we don't want to double code something, correct? Counsel Gilman?
That's exactly correct.
Okay. All right, so basically, it's a very self-explanatory. So on the amendment. Any other discussion? All right, Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
And Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. So back to the main motion with the amendment. All right, any other counselor discussion on this? All right, seeing none, I will call for the roll call. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is for council vote, the decision to adopt special city council permit 2020-006. Modification of special city council permit 2017-012. Schoolhouse Road number two to four, map 262 lots 37 and 38. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections 4.3, sign regulations 5.17, drive-through facilities 5.29.3.3. Additional uses 5.29.6.1, off-street parking requirements 5.298, drive-through facilities and 5.2910, relieved by special permit and in R10 mixed use overlay district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Gilman?
Um, so first of all, I, I, in terms of a committee report, I just wanted to emphasize that we worked closely with Chief Conley throughout this whole process, which was really helpful. And I wanted to credit to him that he did best practices research of what other North Shore communities were requesting in terms of fines. And I think that that's really important. So some of the best practices that we looked at in terms of waterfront communities, Ry, New Hampshire, last year was up to 100.
Counsel Gilman?
Yeah.
We're on for council vote to, for the mixed over, mixed use overlay district.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, this was, this is the motion to adopt?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, my family's being really loud right now and I'm having a hard time focusing. So this isn't, this is, I'm in a different location and there's chatter and I'm just distracted. So I'm sorry about that.
Not a problem. Go right ahead.
So I moved to adopt special council permit 2020 006, modification of special council permit 2017-12 to grant to KPN Savings Bank. GXPH4 LLC owner of the real property known as Four Schoolhouse Road and Young Man's Christian Association of the North Shore, Inc., owner of the real property known as Two Schoolhouse Road. A modification of special council permit 2017-12 for special council permit, special council permit 2020-006 for the property located at Schoolhouse Road number two through four, assessors map 262 lots 37 and 38 pursuant to Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 5.29.3.3. Additional uses 5.29.6.1, off-street parking requirements. 5.29.10, relieved by special permit. 5.17 and 5.29.8, drive-through facilities and 4.3, sign regulations. II, modify existing permit, special council permit 2017-12. Double I, allocate eight parking spaces at Schoolhouse Road number four to the parking space count of Schoolhouse Road number two. III, obtain a new drive-through permit and III, I, I receive from relief from signage requirements and I so move. Second.
New, all right, motion's been moved by Counsel Gilman and seconded by Counsel Holmgren and Colm Grun. And I think that I and III and III are subsections.
It's three, right?
Subsections. That's okay. I don't, I don't want people to think.
Bear with me tonight. I'm not having all this chatter, the dog barking and everything. I'm very distracted. And then he came in with a meal for me. It's like, I can't eat right now.
I just don't want people watching the, they could, yeah, they could go on a boat. I, I, Captain.
I, 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 I.
All right.
With me, Counsel LeBlanc. I appreciate it.
It's, we gotta make fun of each other. It's all good, right?
I, I, sir.
All right, is there any other discussion, Counsel Gilman?
No, this is, this is a good program and we, we totally vetted it at P and D and city council. So this is just a motion to adopt. Thank you.
Yes, okay, great. All right, so I will call for the roll call. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
I, I.
Counsel Holmgren, that was a good one.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
I.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, the eyes have it, seven in favor and two absent. Thank you. Motion passes. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business for council vote to amend certificate of vote number 2021-034 regarding an off-cycle funding to action a tenant-based rental mortgage assistance program.
All right, so John, I hate throwing you under the bus this evening, but you're gonna carry the bulk load of this. So we have been asked to amend our previous vote and to add the following. It is in the, the the packet and it is highlighted in the yellow. So if you would like to read the main motion and amend it with the second motion, oh, actually, Joanne, does he need to read the main motion? Or can he just amend the, the main motion with the second motion?
I think you should read, since it was passed on March 9th, what the original motion is. And then after he can make an amendment for the appropriation.
All right, so Counsel John, I would just read the, the main motion and then amend it to move to amend it.
Okay. The main motion, budget and finance voted.
We're down to, it says in city council. It was voted on March 9th.
All right, yeah. On a motion by Counsel Cox, seconded by Counsel Menhead, the city council voted by roll call nine in favor, zero opposed to appropriate up to $100,000 for the Community Preservation Act funds as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to provide off-cycle funding for the purpose of Action Inc., tennis tenant-based rental mortgage assistance program. The appropriation will be allocated to the community housing category and be funded by up to $100,000 from Community Housing Reserve Fund number 4530. The project will be tracked in the Community Preservation Fund, Community Housing Projects Fund number 4904. And I'd like to amend that motion by adding the appropriation will be allocated to the community house category and be funded by up to $63,000 from the Community Housing Reserve Fund number 4530 and $37,000 from the unrestricted reserves in Fund Number 4500. And I so move.
All right, I'll second that. It's been moved by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel LeBlanc. Okay. So does anybody have any questions? We have Kenny on the call this evening. He reached out to us to amend this. Kenny, would you like to explain this to us real quick before we vote on it? So everybody knows what we're doing.
Yes, absolutely. So we had the off-cycle, as you know, with $100,000. When we put together the motions, I didn't take into account the $200,000 that was voted at the previous budget and finance meeting because I was waiting for a public hearing. So I apologize. It's, it's, it's my era and I just want to get it right. So that's why we're looking to split fund it, the $100,000 between the Community Housing Reserve, $63,000 and $37,000 from the unrestricted reserves. I just want to, I just want to get this right.
Okay.
Again, I apologize.
No problem. It's always better to catch it later than never, you know?
Yep. Thank you.
So does everybody understand? All right. I will call for the roll. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right, after the vote, Joanne, is there anything else we need to do for this?
Yes, you need a motion to amend the budget and finance minutes on this matter so that you can correct the incorrect allocations in these minutes. So we'll have paper trail on why the council had to amend this motion.
All right, so I'll move to amend the minutes of the March 4th, 2021 budget and finance. Standing committee to reflect what we, what the amended motion we just voted in. And I so move.
Second.
All right, so we're moving in second. And so basically, we're just amending the minutes to the budget and finance. Everybody understand? All right, so I will call for the roll call. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Motion to amend the budget finance, March 4th, 2021. Minutes passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right, great job, everyone. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
So the next order of business, oh, well, are you going to correct the March 9th minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will make a motion to correct the March 9th, 2021 council. So this is the council, right? Council minutes to reflect the amended motion of this evening. And I so move.
Second.
All right, so same thing, guys. Just a little bit of housekeeping here. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, motion passes to amend the March 9th, 2021 city council minutes to reflect the amended motion for the off-cycle Community Preservation Act is passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent. All right, once again, great job, everyone. And it's just housekeeping. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next, sorry, order of business is other business. It's the city council discussion regarding the 2020 civility resolution.
All right, Counsel Holmgren, would you like to take charge on this? I know there's been a you know, where, where do we want to send this? Do we want to send it just to O and A? Do we want to send it to the Human Rights Commission or? So you take the lead and floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So I in light of the very unfortunate and large volume of hate crimes that continue in this country, I asked the Human Rights Commission to examine the council civility resolution, which we sign regularly to see if maybe they would be able to make a recommendation to update it. And Counsel Gilman suggested that I notify the council as it is a council document. So I, the Human Rights Commission is currently working on a draft of suggestions for the city council. And they'll be meeting to discuss it on April 26th. And at that time, we'll see if they vote to recommend new language to us.
Great. I think it's, it's an excellent idea to have the Human Rights Commission take a look at this civility resolution. When we enacted this a few years ago, we didn't have this commission to review these things. Especially what's going on in the world and you know, what's, what goes on day to day, even in our small city of Gloucester. It'd be great to have these people that are dedicated to review these items and, and report back to us. Have another set of eyes, look at things besides just ordinance administration and having a recommendation from the administration. So I, I think this is a great idea, Jen, and, and we appreciate bringing this forward. Just for another set of eyes to take a look at. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anybody else? Counsel Nolan?
It, it is a great commission. I'm very proud of them. And the world is ever-changing. We're, we're fortunate to live in Gloucester where people believe in each other. We always have to make sure the people that aren't being believed in or feels they don't have a voice that we can look out for them. So this is very important to the city, not financially only, but for the health and happiness of our community.
Counsel Gilman?
And I echo Counsel Holmgren and Counsel Nolan. And I also think that we're very fortunate that Hannah Kimberly is the chair of that commission because there's no one that's more eloquent with her use of language and her beautiful book writing and, and authorship. So I, I think that if anybody can pen and articulate some really strong comments to kind of support that document a little bit more in light of the things that have happened, it's basically very much to our benefit. So I'm grateful for this and I'm glad that Counsel Holmgren is bringing this forward. So thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none. So we'll wait for, so this will go back to, Joanne, this will go back to ordinance administration, correct? For review?
Um, so you have to refer it to O and A.
Yeah, so Jen, this was just a conversation to figure out where we wanted to, where we wanted to bring it. Like I said earlier, if you wanted to send it to the Human Rights Commission and O and A or just to O and A. So, so we'll send it out to the Human Rights Commission. Give Joanna a call tomorrow. Put the order in and then we'll put it out to, and O and A will wait till we have a referral or something from the Human Rights Commission.
All right, sounds great. Thank you all.
Awesome. I appreciate it, everybody. Sitting with us this evening and Madam Clerk, we have the next. Um, sitting with us this evening and, um, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business?
It's council request to the mayor.
All right, uh, Counsel O'Hara?
Thank you, I'd just like to mention that, uh, on Monday, Patriots Day, I think it's the nineteenth, the. Red Cross is holding a blitz, um, blood drive from nine AM to seven PM. Um, they're holding two of them in, um, northern Massachusetts, one is, uh, I think Gillette Stadium. And the other one's at the Magnolia Library, um, so anyone who would like to donate, uh, one eight hundred. Uh, Red Cross to set up an appointment, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie, I missed the last one because I had my second COVID shot that Wednesday and the blood drive was there, so I'm, I'm looking forward to this next one. All right, uh, Counselor Pat?
Nothing, uh, for the, uh, mayor, uh, tonight, but, uh, I wanted to, uh, um, say I did have a discussion with, uh. Uh, Scott Memhart, uh, quite a long discussion, uh, um, while, and, uh, he's in, uh, in the hospital and, uh. Sounds like, uh, he's getting, uh, some superior, um, treatment. Um, and we discussed, uh, some of our, you know, common, uh, uh, issues. Um, so I want to wish him well and also, uh, obviously, we, uh, suddenly had, uh, uh, Counselor Cox, uh, you said was involved in a. Accident and I'm hoping that, uh, uh, she's okay and, um, that we, uh, I wish her, uh, the best and that. Uh, we'll see her back, you know, um, um, you know, re- real soon.
All right, thank you, Barry, uh, Counsel McCarthy?
Yeah, I first echo what Barry said, hope, uh, you know, both of them are on the mend and back with us soon. Um, I'd like to ask the administration to, maybe give us an update on the current status of all our marijuana permits. Our recreational marijuana permits, been a while since we've heard anything. Um, and possibly an update on what we're, um, receiving for funding from, you know, from them on their, uh. Their host agreements, um, like I said, I haven't heard anything and, and it's been a while, so. You know, where we connect, where the permitting is right now and, uh, and what the city has received for, uh, the current house permits that are up.
All right, thank you, John, um, Counsel Nolan?
I, I do have a question for the mayor, I've got a comment, um, if we could get some information on where we stand with the city of Gloucester as far as. Um, watershed and what our anticipated population and what we can, we, we can. Sustain, uh, with modern development and new developments and also the same with the sewer infrastructure, uh, by adding more to the sewer. Um, that would be some information that we could greatly use, um, in another comment, I hope that Melissa and Scott are well. And I also want to thank, um, Counsel Gilman, McCarthy and Ed Conley for working on the parking. Um, it's been a lot of work for a lot of people and it, it's, it's turned out to be a, a good thing, some things were figured out and we'll, we'll move on from there and, uh, thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Counsel Holmgren?
Thank you, I would like to echo counselors Pat and McCarthy and Nolan, I'm, I'm wishing Scott and Melissa both well. I just, I, I don't have any questions for the mayor, thank you, Counselor Nolan, also for bringing up that question about watershed, I think that's very important. Um, it's important to a lot of our constituents and I just, uh, want to remind everybody that, uh, even though. Things are opening up and even though, thank goodness, we are all lining up to get vaccinated, this virus is still not tired of us, so please continue to wear your masks. Uh, do your best to socially distance and be safe and, uh, it, things are, things are slowly getting better, so that's wonderful news, have a great night.
Thank you, Jen, you too, uh, Counsel Gilman?
Um, yeah, thanks, counselors, for bearing with me tonight and laughing with me and.
I.
It makes a lot of noise again right now, so I'm sorry, it's like.
All right, we all have an off night, though, we're good.
I, I know, I appreciate it, um, so I do have a request that I would like, it kind of expands a little bit on what Counsel Nolan said about, um, the watersheds, but. Specifically regarding, um, I'd, I'd like to request that Attorney Pace and provides to the council. Um, just a, a reporter presentation on his legal findings of the article ninety-seven. Um, matters that pertains to the decisions made at the firing range at Haskell Pond and West Gloucester firing range. Um, and also what basically this means to folks that are using this area. Um, it was stated in the minutes on April fifth that, um, the deed was for water use only, he believes that it's for. Referral to drinking and doesn't believe that, um.
Bill, you're on mute. Somehow you went to mute.
Did it, when did I go to mute?
Um, fifteen minutes ago, no.
Drinking.
No, yeah, not too long ago, you asked about the article ninety-seven and I, I don't, I just, before you go any further, um, that is, that is on the consent agenda to be referred out to O and A for the next meeting. So I don't know if you want to save your questions for that, but, um, maybe email them, Chip, so he knows what to do it, so.
That's great, I, I was just looking for, 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 um, his legal advice, um. On this matter that was in front of us, I, I would just like to understand it. And also any of the use restrictions as a result of his findings, I think that it's important that we understand it. And it's, it would be wonderfully suited for O and A as part of that discussion, so. I mean, that, that works great and I just wanted to mention that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna repeat what I spoke with Mike about, our GPW director earlier, um, I gl, I think the council. Um, would benefit on seeing a list of streets that are gonna be worked on that, that aren't going to be dug up, dug up but be fixed. Um, so that way we can pass it on, I know we're getting complaints and we're getting beat up on. Seems like every road that, um, you travel down, especially the main roads, they're being worked on at this, at this point, so. It'd be nice to have a street plan to know where we are in the pipeline and what's gonna be a priority, so we can. Um, pass that information along to our constituents, so, um, Mike knows and then that was just my formal request through the mayor's office. All right, um, anything else before we leave this evening? The Counsel Nolan?
Um, it's just shy of shower time.
I know, we're gonna make it, Jen, all right.
My plumbing, for the benefit of the public, our shower plumbing is literally on this wall.
All right.
Welcome to my house.
On that note, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
So move, that did.
It's been moved and seconded, all right, Counsel Pat?
I, 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 I.
Oh, gosh.
Counselor Gilman?
Barry, that was so fresh, uh. I will I, I it as well.
All right, Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, Counsel LeBlank, I'm gonna I also, uh, Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
I.
And Counsel O'Hara? Jamie, I didn't hear you, but I'm sorry.
He's muted.
Nope, you're muted.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go, all right, awesome, uh, we motion to adjourn, passes on a roll call vote of seven in favor, two absent, thank you, everybody. Um, have a good night and we'll see you soon.